Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It automatically starts streaming too, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
On YouTube. I just started recording right now.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
On YouTube. I just started recording right now.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Are you streaming on this?
Yeah.
On YouTube. I just started recording right now.
Meeting?
Oh, you need to.
Yes, sir.
I have. You're streaming on this?
Yeah.
On YouTube. I just started recording right now.
Who's in?
Streaming on this?
Yeah.
On YouTube. I just started recording right now.
Who's in?
Yeah.
On YouTube. I just started.
Again, that where you started.
Who's in?
Yeah.
I just started. Again, that where you started.
Who's in?
Yeah.
I just started. Again, that where you started.
Who's in?
Yeah.
I just started.
How did you start it?
Who's in?
Yeah.
I just started.
How did you start it? I get to the minutes please though.
Who's in?
We're doing that right now though.
On YouTube.
Who's in?
How do I do this again?
Yeah. Eric, we got the recording set. Eric, we got the recording set.
Yes, sir. We are, we're live and recording.
It just doesn't say recording online, so. Eric, we got the recording set.
Yes, sir. We are, we're live and.
We're live on YouTube. Oh, there's the recording.
That was my fault. I, I thought I'd pushed the button. Sorry.
Well, the meeting hasn't started yet officially, so you're fine. But we are just about ready. All right. It appears that we have one, two, three, four, five council members. I have not heard, I assume, Councilmember Shun and Vittisimano will join us shortly. I call the meeting to order noting that we do have a quorum present. And pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined that this meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location, given the ongoing coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube at youtube.com/user/wvctv. So anyone can still participate in our meeting as they traditionally do if they were present in the room with us by viewing it on YouTube. With that then, we have our minutes of October 27th. Motion on the minutes in a second.
Move for approval of the minutes?
Second.
Hearing no further comments. Then, without objection, we will consider the minutes approved. Hearing no objections. That passes unanimously. Next, our review of our regular meeting agenda. There have been no changes. Any last minute concerns or anything there? Hearing no comments or questions. We'll go to item five, our ordinances, ordinance 20-46. This is to dissolve the Market Street Neighborhood Development Project area. And I see Councilmember Vittisimano joined us. Who's handling this, Mr. Isaac? You're muted, so.
Sorry. Yeah, I think, Mr. Springmeyer, is you on? There he goes.
There he is. Okay, we can see him. He's unmuted himself and we can actually see his picture. His handsome bearded face.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's good to see you all, and I appreciate the opportunity to put on a, on a tie. I haven't done that for a while, so. Yes, we are, the item before you today is to discuss the dissolving, the Market Street RDA. This is a cleanup item from when we, going back to when we created the Fairborn CRA in 2017. We knew this was going to come up as soon as we triggered the Fairborn CRA, which is being done for the 2020 tax year. When we created the Fairborn CRA in 2017, we included all of the properties that are within the Market Street RDA. This was done on purpose and it allowed us to increase the, the collection period for those properties as, for 20 years, as well as pick up the rest of the properties that encompassed the Fairborn CRA along the north side of 3,500 South and, and, and south side west of our city center. There's no negative fiscal impact on this. All of the properties that, that are currently in the Market Street project area are encompassed by the new Fairborn CRA and the upside is, yeah, it's all, it's all upside for this project. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Well, one is, you mentioned that the boundaries of the new CRA is not exactly the same. It included more?
Yes. The, the new, the Fairborn CRA included substantially more properties than the, than the, than the Market Street RDA did. I think we've got maps for those. Eric Bunderson, yep?
Mr. Springmeyer, ties are overrated anyway.
Yours looks nice. So this is, this is the map for our Fairborn CRA. You can see it picks up all of our properties in, you know, where the current tower is, is constructed as well as the north end of 3,500 South, going down to 3,500, 3,600 West and a little bit beyond that. Eric, if you could show the Market Street map. This is the boundaries of the Market Street RDA. You can see it just picks up just what was the, the shopping center there as well as the four commercial properties across the street and slightly north or slightly east, all of which are included in the Fairborn area. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
Thank you. That does help just to see what's and be reminded of what it expanded to. Councilmembers, anything else? Hearing no further questions or comments? Jonathan, thank you.
Thank you. You let me, you let me off easy tonight.
Okay. We'll go to our next item, which is Resolution 20-173 to approve the purchase of six Toyota Camry passenger vehicles from Young Toyota. And.
Mr. Willerton is getting on now or?
Yep. Yeah, I, I see him there. He's, doesn't have a picture, but.
There we go.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is to approve the purchase of six Toyota Camry hybrid vehicles. Normally, in a normal year, we would be bringing to the council the, or at least historically, we brought to the council the purchase of approximately 30 vehicles every year. Because of budget concerns with COVID, Wayne has asked us to hold off on that, but he, he did ask us to move ahead with the purchase of six of Camry vehicles for the Police Department Investigations Division. So that's, that's what this is now. So it will require a budget opening. There was, the, the purchase of new vehicles was not included in the adopted budget, so these six vehicles and any others that we bring to you in the future will all require a budget opening.
Okay. And that's a total of just under $154,000.
Right, and about $25,000 apiece, a little over that.
Yes.
So they're being purchased off the state contract from Young Toyota, if I didn't mention that.
You did, so. Any questions? Comments? I, I would say that, yes, we are in a reduced budget situation economically, what's happening with revenues. But there are parts of our budget that we prioritize and certainly the work of our police department is one of those priorities.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, and Young Toyota, that's not in West Valley. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a Toyota dealership in West Valley we could buy these from?
No.
Okay. I mean, that, that's the only question. I had some constituents ask me before, you know, why are we buying cars out of West Valley? And I think we usually do, but if there are no Toyotas available, that's what we're buying. And then, Russ, we've also, you know, we've stuck with Ford on many vehicles because the shop can service Fords and we don't want to have a whole bunch of different kinds of vehicles, but these Toyotas, we already have many Toyotas, don't we, as well?
Yes, yes, we do. We started purchasing the hybrid Camrys. I was trying to remember how long ago it's been. It's been at least 10 years and they've done well.
So we're all set up to service them and and be a continuation of what we've got and what we've done before. And, okay, thank you.
And I believe that these are all hybrids, so it is also in support of efforts to move in the direction, once the quality and capacity are there, not just on our staff, but for the vehicles as well, to go just a little bit more green. That's the intent of a hybrid. It's, I think these are half-electric and, well, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's partially electric.
Right, they'll, they'll run as long as the batteries are charged, you know, they'll run on battery power. You know, I, I don't know exactly how many miles they'll go on the battery power, but when the batteries get low, they do shift over to regular fuel.
Yes. Which is essential for the police department. We can't have them run out of electricity and run over, even though there's just investigations. They're not necessarily super urgent, but they are, we don't want to delay police investigations. All right. Then, with that, hearing no further comments, we'll go to Resolution 20-174. Approve the purchase of a stormwater pipe video inspection system. Mr. Willardson?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is for approximately the same price as buying six vehicles. We can buy one stormwater video inspection system. So this is an important function for us. We, we initially bought a camera to inventory our storm drainage system and to inspect it and see what condition it's in about 20 years ago. That camera is way out of date now and this resolution will replace it with a, with a new camera and system so that will integrate fully with our City Works Maintenance Management software and enable us to continue, well, actually, we had a difficult time using the old cameras, so this one will renew our abilities to inspect our, our storm drainage system. One of the things I might mention is with our new fees that were adopted, we're charging an additional fee every time a utility company crosses one of our storm drain lines so that we can go back in and camera that line, make sure that they did not damage it, or we often find, or at least we have in the past, found gas lines and telecommunications lines going right through the middle of our, our storm drains, so. This camera will help us to put an end to that and make sure that they come back and repair that kind of damage.
So, Russ, I have a question. Do you have a schedule that we inspect pretty much all the pipes over one, two, or three years? Or is it only as needed?
In the past, it's been only as needed just because the, our, our camera wasn't very functional, but this will enable us to do, to put a schedule together that will, you know, we can inspect them all.
Okay, thank you.
We've had to resort to a GoPro camera on top of a remote control car in some cases to, to do that, but this is a major upgrade from that.
I thought we bought that remote control car just to do that. Okay, thank you.
So this will help us, Mr. Willerton, in situations like when we're doing projects like 2,700 West where we discovered some problems that weren't readily apparent in the stormwater there?
Yes, it, it will help us to, to know the condition of the pipe before we start on any of those projects, yes.
So that will help us in the bidding process so that we can ensure we cover all that upfront?
We'll, we'll be aware of it and be able to include it in our bids, yes.
Okay. Hearing no further comments. Then we'll go to Resolution 20-175 to approve payment of certain connection fees to Granger Hunter Improvement District.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll, I'll speak to that.
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, so as you're aware, we've been talking about many betterments that, that the city has requested of UDOT on the Mountain View Corridor project in the city, and one of those happens to be landscaping and lighting and other improvements along 3,500 South and 5,600 West where UDOT is widening. And so as part of that, we need to get water service to those new landscapes, just to the, to the irrigation systems for the trees, to water the trees. And so that, I believe there's 10 meters that this design necessitates, and so we're requesting authorization from the council to pay Granger Hunter the fees associated with connecting these 10 new water services for these, for the Mountain View Corridor betterment.
Okay, Council, any questions? Comments? Hearing no further comments. Then, Mr. Johnson, thank you very much on that, and we will go now to Resolution 20-176. Authorize the city to enter in a right-of-way purchase agreement and accept a warranty deed with and from Texco for property at 2,784 West, 3,835 South. Is that right? Okay.
Mayor, this property is actually at 4,699 South, 4,800 West.
Yes, that's what I saw in all the backup documents, and I'm like, I'm saying, oh, man, I must have skipped this one on the, when I studied the agenda, but, yeah. Okay, that must have been left over, so, but it is Texco and it is a right-of-way purchase and warranty deed still, right?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Willerton, are you gonna handle this?
Mr. Johnson's going to, thank you.
There he's back. I thought he had left us, but soon as he unmutes, then will Dan Johnson, our city engineer.
Okay, so I assume you want an update on the, the Resolution 20-176, the purchase of the, the Texco property?
Yes.
Okay, yes, this is part of the 4,700 South Reconstruction and Widening Project that we have been working on for quite some time and are anxiously engaged in the, the design of that project right now. So this, the, the roadway design for that project, footprint of that really renders that parcel on the, the northeast corner of 4,700 South and 4,800 West unusable. The roadway widening impacts the footprint of the building, and so we need to purchase the entire parcel. We will demolish the building. So this, again, as a reminder, this is a federally funded project, very similar to the, to what we're doing on 4,100 South. And, and so the, as you recall, we brought several parcel acquisitions, partial parcel acquisitions on the 4,100 South Reconstruction Project. And this is happening in the same way. So the funding is coming through UDOT from, from the federal government, from, through the Surface Transportation Program. And so the city has entered into an agreement with Mag, with Kern's Metro Township. We're working on this project together. And, but the city will acquire, is, with these federal funds is acquiring this parcel, a portion of the parcel will be used for for the roadway widening, and then we'll, in a, in a future day, have to figure out what to do with the remnant, with the remnant parcel. But that's in general a, a report, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Council?
So I have a question. It says here that we're responsible for 6.77% of the actual cost?
Yes, so with these federally funded projects, that is generally, generally the matching funds that, that are required. This one's a little bit unique in that we would be responsible for, since it's, it's so Kern's Metro Township is responsible for half of this project, or actually probably closer to three quarters of this project. But this particular parcel, we would likely be responsible for half of that 6.77% match roughly, but, but that's normally the, the, the ratio of matching funds that, that we're required to pay on these, with this type of federal fund.
So we won't be paying out the entire 511?
No, we will not.
Does financial impact of 511?
Yeah, so when we put the fiscal impact of 511 on that issue paper, that's the total impact of the parcel, but the, the city's impact is, is roughly, well. Yeah, it's about three and a half percent, but.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, but it, it ends up all being connect, you know, all of the project costs are tied together, and so at some point, the city, the, the project funds will likely exceed, the project cost will likely exceed the funds available as they did on 4,100 South, and at that point, the city's responsible for every dollar that we spend above the federally programmed amount, but. But yes, I mean, this, this is 93% of the project, of the, of the cost of this acquisition is coming with federal funds.
This is the first item, Mr. Johnson, that we've seen on this 4,700 South project. Well, I call it 47, 4,715, whatever. It's likely, though, that we'll see more items in the future with regard to this.
You certainly will, yes.
Okay. Hearing no further comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll move on now to communications. The first one will be CIP project update.
And that's me as well.
As well, okay.
And Kobe Wilson has just turned on his camera. I'd like to introduce him to the council. This is Kobe Wilson. He's the Assistant City Engineer over capital improvement projects. And he has done a lot of, most of the work that you see happening around the city. Kobe's got his fingers in it and, but mostly behind the scenes, but we thought it'd be good to introduce him to the council, and he's gonna help me to, to tell the story of some of the work that we've done this past year, much of which you've seen. But let's see, I think I will share my screen. We've got a little presentation to summarize just a couple of projects that we've done. And you see it, okay?
Yes, it's up now.
All right, so so I'm gonna just, so we're just gonna talk about three projects, kind of the big ones that we, that we did, 4,100 South, 2,700 West, and the 2020 overlay project. So 4,100 South, you're probably getting tired of hearing about it. You've been hearing about it for years, but this is, this has been a big, big project for us and, and one that's, you know, we're, it's, it's well-needed and, and we're, we're glad we're, we're, there's an end in sight, but just a reminder of, of some of the, the big picture items. Overall, total project cost is, is 26-plus million with the city responsible for about 10 and a half of that. 10 and a half million of that project came from city funds. Geneva Rock Products is the contractor. And we hired PEC, an engineering firm, to do the construction management and, and the engineering inspection of this project, but the, the funding source includes the Federal Surface Transportation Program, so the same program that will be used on the 4,700 South Reconstruction Widening Project. Some state funds, some classy road funds, some stormwater utility funds, transportation cell tax, and then Granger Hunter replaced, well, they, they replaced portions of, or all of, three different water lines that they have in that road. So definitely a, a big piece from Granger Hunter.
And?
Yeah.
That picture, where is that taken at?
So the picture on the, the bottom or the top?
Bottom.
The bottom was a, a drone that, that PEC had, and that was taken roughly about 50th West, looking. And that was taken roughly about 50th West, looking east on a smoky day. And that is during the repaving process. You've seen the, you're all aware of the paving problems that we had. And that photo was during the repair of that project, of that problem.
Well, the reason I mention that, it looks an awful lot like one of our residents who used to frequent our council members on a regular basis right there.
It's not very far from his house, and it might actually be his house.
That is his house.
Yeah, I think you're right. I know who you're talking about.
I just thought that was unique, since he spoke so many times about 4100 South.
Yeah, we've visited with him, our contractor, they know him by name.
Yes, okay, sorry to interrupt, but I couldn't help myself.
And then the top photograph is looking west, standing almost at 40th West.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of in the earlier phase of the project. You're looking at the Beans and Brew and the Arctic Circle. So, all right, so, well, as long as we're talking about pictures, let's just look at these pictures. So these, just, these pictures give us kind of an overall impression of the magnitude of the work that we did out here. This was a complete pavement reconstruction. So we, our new pavement section is 23 inches thick, consisting of a fabric, granular borrow, and six inches of asphalt on top of that. And so what we're left with is a very solid roadway that's going to perform very well in the future. But it took a lot of pain and reconstruction effort and excavation to get there. And so the scope of the project was a full pavement reconstruction. We replaced the traffic signal at 4800 West and 4400 West. 40th West, we modified it and replaced one of the four legs of that intersection. We added the new signal at the fire station to add greater, the ability for the fire department to get out of there with greater ease. And that's not quite turned on yet, but it's getting close. The concrete walls, streetlights, street trees, the Holder Drive landscaping, that's not going to be completed this year. But that's going to, that little detention basin on the corner of Holder Drive and 4100 South is going to have some nice plants planted into it, along with some weed fabric and some rock mulch to make it look like a nice amenity instead of the fenced-in, weedy detention basin project or parcel that was there before. That's definitely going to be an improvement. And then one of the things that, in the Public Works Department, we get most excited about is storm drain improvements. We did, we have now a complete trunk line from 40th West out to 5600 West. Well, actually, from Bangor to 5600 West, that drains a significant portion of the city. And that was finished out with this project. And then going west through 40th West, we are, we're restoring that third westbound through lane. So there will be three lanes going through 40th West westbound, which will be an addition. So it'll be nice, it's definitely needed out there. One of the things that we're adding, that we've added to this project, is ornamental fencing. We've worked with several property owners who had existing chain link fence that was in maybe some rough condition. And there are several of these parcels that we, the fence needed to be replaced. And so we've worked with those, it needed to be replaced because it was impacted by the project. But we worked with those property owners. And they, many of them have agreed to allow us to install an ornamental iron fence on those properties instead of replacing that with a chain link fence. And we're also getting a proposal, well, we've requested proposals from contractors to, for this, outside of this reconstruction project, to do a fencing, an ornamental fencing project, to install ornamental fencing throughout the remainder of, along the other parcels that have existing chain link fence but are not impacted by the project. And so ultimately, we're really looking forward to a nice, clean look with old fences being replaced. And this heavily traveled corridor is going to definitely have a nice face left by the time we are all said and done. So.
Dan?
Yes.
Can I ask you one question? I thought we were not going to have any mailboxes on that road. And I noticed today, one, kind of at the, it's east of 56th, by about a block or so, on the north side of the road that's on 41. And I thought it was going to be tucked back into a neighborhood.
I'd have to check into that. Is it a community box or a single home mailbox?
No, it's a community. And I thought we had spoke about taking all the community ones and just put them right around the corner so that the postman doesn't have to stop.
There is one, so there's, we've worked it out so that he does not have to block a lane for every mailbox that goes in. But I believe there's one that he has to stop on a cross street and then walk over to the mailbox. But he won't need to block a lane. We worked with, that was one of the challenging things that we went through, was to get these mailboxes to find a place for them, whether they're inside right-of-way or whether we purchased an easement. And there were some folks that didn't want that in their property, they didn't want it, they didn't want to sell us an easement, and we weren't going to force the issue. And so I think the one that you're speaking, I think I know the one you're talking about. But we've made it so that the postal service will not need to block a lane. But there is one or two, there's one that's still on 4100 South.
So they're good with leaving the truck on a side street there?
Yeah.
And walking around?
Yep, that's what we've worked out with them, and I think they're okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. And so just to finish the project out, there's still quite a bit of patterned concrete that's not in, mostly on the north side, but some on the south side. There's a few aerial crossings of wires that have still got to be taken down. And then, and then the trees, of course. The trees are coming in in springtime. We've obviously missed the planting window. And so they're coming soon. And we look forward to them because that's definitely going to spruce up the corridor and make it look great. One of the issues, oh, go ahead.
Will those be the tall pot trees?
Excuse me, the what type of trees?
Tall pot, they seem to, those are the ones that survive better. We seem to lose a lot of them when it's just regular pods.
Tall pot, I'm not familiar with the term, but we've worked.
No, they're just regular trees, okay.
Well, we've worked with the Parks Department. As, you know, we public works people do not claim to be tree experts. But tree selection was done with, in close consideration with the Parks Department, considering the power lines that we have on the south side of the road versus the, you know, a clear view of the sky on the north side. So the tree selection was, there was quite a bit of effort that went into that. And I think that what we're going to have is going to be a nice mix of trees. And, but I'm not familiar with the term tall pot, but I, but.
Why don't you put that in the back of your list somewhere? And not for this project, but the success rate of the trees taking root and staying alive is significantly higher for tall pot trees.
Okay, well, I will put it on my list of things to learn about. I've learned a lot about trees so far on this project, but more to learn. And then one of the biggest challenges that we dealt with was the pavement cross slope issues. This was definitely a big challenge to see water not making it to the curb and gutter. We were quite frustrated with that. But Geneva did a good job of stepping up and getting that fixed on the south side. We still have yet to verify that the problem has been completely resolved. But it will be before the project is closed out. And, but the paving window, if there is any additional paving that needs to be done this year, that's, we've missed it. That window has passed, and it's too cold now. And so we're going to watch that and identify any additional places that need some work to make the drainage function properly on that roadway. But I think they've captured most of it with the work that they've done recently on the south side of the road.
Dan?
Yeah.
They've still got a lot of open manholes there. They haven't dropped covers in yet. Will that be impacted by the weather?
The manholes, no, they're raising those right now. And we can do those in colder weather. We just need to do some things to protect the concrete from the freezing temperatures. But that's definitely something that we can do in the colder weather. We're not inhibited, like restricted as badly as we are with asphalt.
And are those manholes up to level or are they still causing a bump in the road?
Well, if they aren't up to level, I haven't driven over any of them because they're all really new. But if they don't meet our standards, they'll do them again.
My wife said she drove down there the other day, and several of those that were in were still causing thumps as she drove over them.
Okay, well, we'll definitely deal with that. And there's, there's still quite a bit of things to do. And but.
Yeah, like opening up five of the lanes.
Yes, that's coming soon.
Hopefully.
Yeah, I hope so, too. Yeah, once that concrete is placed within this next month, I think we will likely see those barrels disappear until springtime when the trees have to come back in or when the trees get planted.
Give us at least six months of open road there in the next four years.
Well, I hope to give you 20 years here in just a few months, so.
Okay.
Okay.
That's 20 years if no one digs it up.
Yep.
If they dig it up, it's less.
It's less, you're absolutely right. We've taught you well in pavement management, sir.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to go to the next slide, which is going to bring Kobe Wilson up. And he's going to talk to you about 2700 West and the 2020 overlay project.
All right, thanks, Dan. Yeah, as Dan said, appreciate the introduction. I'm Kobe Wilson. I'm the Assistant City Engineer for West Valley. Been with the city for about eight years, managing our capital improvement projects. So grateful for the opportunity to have to report on a couple of our projects this summer. And the first one we're going to talk about is 2700 West. As you can see there, 2700 West had $3.8 million of authorized funds. Those funds come from multiple sources, including our Class C roads, stormwater utility, the transportation sales tax, and from Salt Lake County. This project was designed in-house by our city staff, our city resources. And the construction project was awarded to Acme Construction in September of last year. So Dan, if you'll go to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about the scope of 2700 West. 2700 West included improvements both inside the pavement section as well as outside the pavement section behind the curb. We had some safety and aesthetic improvements behind the curb as well. But we'll talk about the improvements inside the pavement section first. The storm drain was already mentioned a little bit earlier. Part of our overlay projects, or any of our overlay projects, we do a pretty good assessment of any CMP pipes inside of the roadway, corrugated metal pipes inside the roadway. The, we did have a particular challenge in this one where a reinforced concrete pipe that the county mainly has was quite shallower than what we had anticipated. So when we went to fix some roadway cross slopes, we ran into some challenges fixing those cross slopes due to the shallow reinforced concrete pipe that already existed. But we did, all the CMP pipe inside this roadway, we did replace that prior to doing any asphalt work out there. The scope of this project included a four-inch rotor mill, along with a four-inch asphalt overlay. That overlay was done in two different lifts, and that top lift was actually the first fiber reinforced asphalt that West Valley City has put down in the city. That was brought to the council earlier this year as part of a change order, something we were excited about to hopefully extend the life of our pavement. And one major challenge you have with overlay roads is reflective cracking coming up to the surface. So we were excited to implement that into this roadway. And we hope that we see good results as other municipalities have throughout the state. So in addition to the asphalt, we replaced the traffic signal on 3800 South. That was an extremely old signal with old equipment. And the county who manages some of that equipment gave us a strong recommendation to upgrade that, upgrade that while we could with this project. So replacing that traffic signal is also part of this project. And then in addition to that, we reconfigured the travel lanes on the road, the striping, so that we could get bike lanes in this corridor from 3500 South down to 4100 South. Outside of the roadway, we also made quite a few improvements, which includes the privacy wall that you can see there in the photo, as well as some landscape improvements, including sidewalks. This entire corridor, there were sections of missing sidewalks. So we were able to get the sidewalk from 35th all the way down to 41, as well as the trees and the street lighting. So you can see a pretty good before and after picture there of those improvements that were made behind the curb. Next slide, Dan. See, as with all projects, this project didn't come without challenges. We've already talked about a couple of those. We had roadway cross slopes were significantly challenging this area because not only did we have areas that were really steep, like around 3800 South that we had to fix, we also had cross slopes that were very shallow and didn't provide adequate slope to get the water off the road quick enough. So the challenge of trying to balance the new pavement section to make sure we had adequate slope but not too much slope was particularly challenging. I think we were able to solve that. It's always tough trying to manage that without ruining the integrity of the pavement section. So that was a major challenge out there that was compounded by those shallow utilities that we discovered. But I think we were able to work through those and come up with a good solution on that. Another challenge that we had, it says here, working in backyards. Obviously, working in backyards is not a new thing. That's something where we do quite often, as far as working on private property and working in backyards, of course, in easements that we purchase. But what made this one challenging was the overhead utility lines that you can see and trying to install that post and panel wall under those utilities while staying in our construction easement that we had. So the contractor had to get pretty creative out there to get those, that post and panel wall in there without damaging utilities and without causing too much damage to the backyards along the corridor. So those were some of the challenges that we experienced throughout the project. Overall, we feel that the project was fairly successful. And it wrapped up basically in September of this year. They do have a few, they were given notice of substantial completion in September. However, we do have a few trees that are under warranty that they'll be back in the spring to replace. So replace all the ones that have died so far and those that don't make it through the winter. So they will be back. Aside from that, if there's no questions on 2700 West, I can either answer those or we can move on to our 2020 overlay project. All right, so our overlay project this year, as you can see there in the project map, with the exception of Beaver Circle, all of our roads were in the Rolling Meadows subdivision roads, the residential roads just south of City Hall here. This project had $1.3 million of funds coming from Class C roads and the transportation sales tax. And the contract to Staker Parsons was awarded to them in, let's see, the end of June of this year, in 2020. Next slide, Dan. So the scope of all of our overlay projects, of course, is to get new asphalt down on each of these roads. Once we've identified the roads, we look at each road independently to assess the condition of the existing pavement and determine the proper treatment for the road. Each of these roads typically have some type of a unique treatment as far as the mill depth that we do, how much asphalt we put down. If we have to pulverize all of the asphalt, we have to look at each of those independently and kind of figure out the right treatment. But once again, before we get to the asphalt, you can see there's some pipes that we ripped out of the ground, some of that CMP pipe remaining from many years ago. We always try to identify that CMP pipe and replace it with these overlay projects. If we don't, we're certain to find failure in the roadway above those pipes. So it's important for us to go through and make sure that we get all those out of the ground and replace it with good concrete pipe before we put down the asphalt.
Can I ask one question?
You bet, go ahead.
So Kobe, when you're doing this, do you ever check with Granger Hunter to see if they have old connections that they need to replace some of their water connections down the road? Because I know in our neighborhood, we've had probably four different instances where three. Because I know in our neighborhood, we've had probably four different instances where three houses got flooded.
That's a, that's a really good question. So engineering and operations, they actually have a monthly meeting with Granger Hunter Improvement District. And we sit down and we talk about upcoming projects, both from the district perspective and from the city perspective, to try to identify future project conflicts. So yes, we do have a monthly meeting to try to talk to them. We've recently provided them the roads for next year, twenty twenty one overlay, so they can start looking at those. Sometimes if, if Granger Hunter can get out ahead of us, they hurry and go and do that and they'll put that, they'll accelerate those projects. If it's in a situation where Granger Hunter can't accelerate the project, then it's often that we will postpone our project. So we don't run into that, into that conflict. So we do have monthly coordination meetings to try to avoid that situation.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Well, you may want to mention the Granger Hunter did replace a bunch of water lines in this neighborhood. Just, I think it was two years ago.
Yep, that's a good point too, Russ. And, and in addition to that, if, if you drive some of these roads, you're going to see that there's, there has been some substantial utility patches out there when they did the, their water line installation. So in those areas, rather than replacing that brand new asphalt that's been down within the last couple of years, we, we leave that asphalt in place and we do our overlay right up to the asphalt that Granger Hunter's recently put in. So. So the last thing to talk about as far as the scope is concerned, West Valley City, we try to, especially moving forward with our adopted standards, we look at all the pedestrian ramps that are impacted by our overlay project. And we make sure that if those ramps need to be replaced to meet ADA standards, then we replace those and bring those up to, up to speed with the latest ADA standards. So there were several pedestrian ramps replaced with this project, which involves a lot of right of way coordination, because typically we don't have quite enough right of way to purchase those, which I'm sure you've seen a lot of those acquisitions come through from Steve Dell over the year. And you'll see many more coming forwards for the next year. So next slide, Dan. Thanks. So there's a picture of a few of our ped ramps installed this year. We do, again, we always have challenges. This, this year, the challenge seemed to be revolving around schedule. As I said earlier, they were given notice to proceed, I think, the end of June of this year. Unfortunately, they got a very late start and their concrete subcontractor had an outbreak of COVID hit them. And so several of their crews were down for several weeks. So the contract actually required that, we did Whitehall Drive, which goes out in front of Rolling Meadows Elementary School. And the contract actually said that that particular road was supposed to be done prior to school starting on August twenty fourth. Unfortunately, with that COVID outbreak and the concrete sub not being able to get out there and do their work, they were not able to meet that requirement. And we were actually concerned that we're, they were not going to be able to complete this project this year. But once they were able to get over that COVID mishap, they were able to quickly get several crews out there and get caught back up and finish relatively close to the, the project completion deadline that they were given. We did have to work with the elementary as the elementary did have students in it while we were doing Whitehall Drive. But I think we were pretty fortunate because the superintendent for the contractor is actually married to a principal. So he was very sensitive to making sure that we involved that principal and coordinated with the principal to make sure they knew what was happening. So the other challenge was also on Whitehall, we experienced several soft spots, which sometimes we do with these overlay roads where the subgrade has kind of failed and it's not good, in a good condition for us just to go and pave over the top of. When we run into those situations, we have to excavate much deeper and replace the base of the road. So we did have several of those areas that slowed us up just a little bit. But they did get all the paving done inside of the window where we had temperatures. They still do have a couple punch list items. The other challenge they had within recent weeks was the concrete shortage that the industry is facing right now. But they were able to get the concrete they needed to raise the remaining utilities. And now it's just a few landscape punch list items that we need to do to, to wrap up this project.
I'm here, honey.
But yeah, that's about, that's about all I have on that unless there's any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good update. Next, a brief discussion on our electronic meetings under COVID. The council believes aware that in order for us to do completely electronic meetings, we have to do those thirty days at a time, submit a written notification to the state. And then, as you see, we also have to notify people at the start of meetings. If we do not have an anchor location, if we have an anchor location, we don't need to give any notice, even though members of the council may and others may participate electronically. So, and I believe that the next one is coming up very shortly. If we were to go to an anchor location, and certainly under the current conditions, certainly under this two week notice, why we would not encourage any council member to go to our anchor location. But if we did, we would have to have probably two staff members there, one for the electronic equipment and one to do some testing, like the temperature testing for anyone coming into the room. And if they were there, they could participate as we've had staff do electronically there at the podium. That information, I just wanted to make sure you had. We've decided to go with the all electronic. And because I learned more over the last month, I wanted to share that with you and see if you had any recommendations or changes or if we should continue exactly as we are. It is likely that we will be encouraged to do a lot of electronic social distancing simply over the next couple of months, given the high rate of infection. Any comments? No comments. Are any of you interested in making an anchor location that citizens could come there with masks and social distancing, et cetera, at the city offices? Or do we continue exactly as we are? That's a better way to state it.
Mayor, I think that, you know, I'm hopeful, I guess, that a few months down the road, we might be able to improve our situation, which is less time than we've been doing electronic meetings. So I think we're more than halfway there and I wouldn't change things now. However, if we get into, say, January and there's no blight at the end of the tunnel, then I think we need to reevaluate.
Okay, then without further, you know, issues, I will continue to sign that thirty day notice to the state on a regular basis. Certainly, I anticipate through the holidays, because I doubt, I think things will improve some. I think we'll still be having challenges and we'll see what happens then after the first year. With that, unless there are further comments, noise ordinance discussion. Wayne has sent to us information, but basically it boils down to this. We have an ordinance, a noise ordinance in place. The issues raised by Councilman Hoon there in Chesterfield has been investigated, as you saw. And they are going to do more follow-up and issue citations if there's any further problems. Is there anything else we need to discuss further on that? Any more information or any more action?
I, Mayor, I, I personally think we're going to do something without spending any money and preventing them or helping them to obey the law here in our city. I pick me, for example, I came here, I brought Vietnamese culture here in the US. You know, it's a lunar new year and we have this celebration in Culture Center or other school for to share the culture with other people in, in, in this valley. And I think people, other places, they have this culture too and they, they bring their culture here and they, they want to share that with people around in, in, in their community. And I think there's nothing wrong with that, to be honest with you. Luckily is I, blessings was I, I have someone to, to help me out and to, to help me to be a productive citizen. So I, I learned something about that, you know. If I, I had a band and played at my house on the lunar new year and then people came to me and said, what going on? Tell me, so what is a lunar new year? I can play the band. It does not make sense. I didn't do that. You know, I didn't do that, you know, and that's totally wrong. You know what I'm saying? But here, what we need to do is we have multiple sources we can do without spending any money. And we can help them out. So the people, they don't have a chance, maybe people, they, they want to fix their problem, but they don't have a chance to, to learn or to, 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 to do that. And maybe the city we are, the city, we can help them out. For example, like my hometown project, that's a group of big people. They can send people out, they pass a flyer to the communities and let communities know in a summer tile, in the fall, at the time they have a problem because the weather is so nice. So they out there and they play too late and they, sometime they have band and play this, you know, they carry away, you know, not a problem. Another thing is about Eagle, Eagle Scout. We have Eagle Scout here in this valley. And sometime they want to do the project and they have a supervision with that too. So we can give them some flyer or something they can do for us, that without paying any, any, any sense, you know. Also, you can see the radio, Vietnamese, they have a, you know, Vietnamese new year and you can spend about five minutes in a Vietnamese event there and you can let them know is what going on? Don't do that. It's not right. And or in a Spanish radio, you can go on the radio and spend for five minutes to explain to them about that. Or other, other places in the church, they have a bishop, you know, speak Spanish, they have a father speak Vietnamese. You can go on there and you can spend basically to five minutes and you don't spend any, any dollar to do that. And then to help them out, to send a message out there and let them know is that's not the right thing to do. And help them out because maybe somebody don't know. I, I would blame on them. We, we are the city, we need to, to help them out, to guide them and to try to have them to try to find the way to, 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 to assist them. That's what I, I'm saying, because maybe somebody don't know. Another thing is that you think like long ago, they have all the religious leaders in our community come by, come together and have a meeting. And we can send that information out to that group and say, I hear, I need your help. They go out and your congregation and let people know is, you know, this is not supposed to do. And there's a going to be disrespect to other people. And as, according to the law here in the city, it's totally wrong. You know, look at the, 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 the law here, the ordinance here, we have twenty, twenty seven dash seven one one nine unlawful noise. Very must describe detail what supposed to be not doing. This is from the vehicle for fifty feet. This is more than vehicle. This is a band, they play in the band. And this unlawful noise twenty dash seven one one nine is talking about the people to turn on a loud music from the vehicle. And this is one the band playing is a minute ten or twenty more times more than that. Also, the law, the ordinance will have twenty one dash five one zero four. Let us know about the penalty. See how much going to be. They pay penalty for that. If they are intent to violate the law, but we need to have to, we need to put this real stiff fire for them. For example, last, last time when I heard the police came, told them not to play and they stopped and then police went somewhere and they returned to play again. And that's a violated law. They intend, they know they're not supposed to do, but they, when the police gone, they came back, they did again. And that's totally wrong. Yeah. And this is right here, dash twenty one dash five one oh four, describe very detailed a penalty, how much going to be? And also what they're supposed to pay, everything in there. We have the law, we have the ordinance, but we don't what? Enforce. We don't enforce. And, and also, we, we're not trying to prevent the things occur. We're trying to, we're not trying to have them out to understand the rule and regulation here in our city. People, maybe they don't know, so we have to have them out to understand the rule and ordinance in our city. That's what I want to say. You know, I don't want to call police multiple times for this reason. It's only for my Chesterfield, but also in the King Street behind the Smith, there's a forty one over south and Redwood Road. And now it's a way to also in the Hildale area. Because the weather is nice, but now today is cold. People are not going to do anything about it. The cold weather, but the weather nice in the fall or late summer is, they stay out too late. And then they basically they did something to carry away for that. And that we need to do something. We're not going to sit there and watch. And that's what I, I, I want to present it to you today.
Okay, if I can summarize that, you have a concern with other cultural holidays from the first part of your comments, where they might light off fireworks, et cetera, or have activities that, like the lunar new year, where it extends beyond the normal curfew. And then second, you talked about enforcing our current ordinances and informing the public. And so I'm not sure that there's a way to handle a moving holiday like the lunar holiday. So it's fairly easy in our noise enforcement ordinance to identify holidays like New Year's, where they light off things. And I think there's even an exception for the Chinese New Year. But, you know, we could look at that for other activities there.
Mayor, no, I, I think maybe, I, I didn't make myself clear, maybe.
Well, I might have misunderstood. Maybe the rest of the council understood.
Yeah, here, I, I, I meant, I, I meant is we have our own culture when we came here, but didn't mean we carry away for that. For example, the people, they play in band, maybe they have some party about their culture, about something I don't know. That's why I like comparison with the Vietnamese lunar new year. But the thing here is the band playing in our city not acceptable. According to ordinance here, couple ordinances here, we have to do something about it. I'm not talking about Vietnamese lunar new year or other Chinese new year. No, I could keep example for that. Yes, we have a culture, you know, unique and special we can share. But we share that, we can share within the rule of law with, with respect to people. But here the band, they plan is in our city, in our community, in our neighborhood, violate the law, violate ordinance in our city. And that we need to enforce our ordinance. And we have multiple sources. We can do that. We can prevent before they come to that point, that what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. Well, and all of that, although there may not be an initial cash outlay, there is a cost to all of those. If those groups are going to be informed, someone on staff would have to take the time to inform those groups. And if we're doing that on a regular basis, that could take some time. I don't know how much, but we could certainly take a look at that. And then the enforcement is the same thing. If, right now, certainly our police department spends their time following up on investigations. spends their time following up on investigations and currently for even more serious crimes, those don't always get followed up even readily. The noise problem is usually one that is time sensitive. So we would have to divert resources from higher priority responses for them to get there in a time sensitive way to deal with that. Except for if it's a repeated problem, then it's a little easier.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. There's nothing wrong with that, Mayor. I roll along with the police officers in the past, I knew the, you know, prior time, you know, they have the list, one, two, three, four, five. They're gonna do exactly, I know exactly what you're talking about. But here, I'm trying to say is, we try to prevent, we try to do something, prevent that come to that, you know, that happen is that a band play on the street. Maybe we can go have, pass a flyer to them, go on the radio and talk to them about this, you know, in the Spanish. Or maybe Eagle Scout, we can do something with that, that would cost no, no dollar, no, no money for that. But if they violate the all ordinances and here the, the, the ordinance twenty one dash five one oh four also says that shall be liable for own expensive. So they have to pay all those if they violate the law. You know, for investigation, for everything, even for the interest rate in that one too. So they pay for that. If we get into that point, if we spend time to investigate, if we spend time to go there and talk to people or to, you know, shut them down, it does have, they have to pay everything in that, that ordinance. But the thing is, we are here, we try, we don't want to do that. We want to prevent before that happened. So we have to come to them, talk to them first by going to radio or maybe to have a special, they was a special event they have in our, in our city. And we can ask them five minutes or two minutes and go to a stage and explain to them about that. Yeah. And then we can have a, a police officer, but about the community, police officer can do that too, because we have that community, police officer specified in that area. They can go to the community and just talk to people and explain to them. So they can, we can prevent that, that we try to do. But if that happen, we can enforce and they can have to, and they have to pay according to the ordinance twenty twenty one dash one oh four.
Mayor and Tom, I think that's what Wayne's memo to us today said the police would be doing. Is they would be following up with those specific addresses and making it more of a priority. So I think it's been covered.
Yeah, I understand. The thing is, we need to do something about it, you know. I, I wouldn't do something like that. I wouldn't hire the band, go to my house in front of my yard and play the band all night long. You gotta respect a lot of people. You gotta love someone, you gotta disrespect them. That's how we live, how we come together as a, of a group of community with the multiple ethnic groups here in our city. We have to live in harmony. It's bizarre. A million years, I wouldn't do something like that. Hire a band, go to a play in my front yard and then have a whole bunch of people yelling and shouting at night. What are people next to my house, my neighbor, from the right or from the left or from across the street? What do you think about it? Respect.
Counsel, any further comments? Okay. Certainly, that's information that maybe Mr. Isaac can just discuss. See if there are any possibilities, any suggestions we might make. That's a very difficult area to involve the public and, I don't know. I don't have an answer or a solution that I can see, but maybe staff could look at that and see if there's any further comments that we might do. But I, I think that the immediate problem was solved. It's what are some of the future issues that we might deal with? I don't know.
Okay, well, I certainly appreciate what Mr. Hyun is saying and we'll, we will talk about that in a staff and see what else we may be able to do.
Yeah. And if we do look at any of those suggestions that Councilman Hyun has made, obviously, there are some costs there. I don't think there's anything that doesn't have a cost. Even just making the arrangements and that, but maybe you can look at that too. I don't know.
Yes, sir.
But if, yeah, if you pinpoint, but if you pinpoint a house or the location and you can, you know, come to talk to them directly, you know, to like the email from Wayne, he just sent it out today. If you pinpoint that house or that household or that person in that location, we can go there and they can go there and get talk directly to them, you know, it's bizarre, to me, it's bizarre.
Yeah, that's exactly what Chief Jacobs has said she's going to do.
Okay, very good. Next, we go to our COVID nineteen update. You've seen an email from Wayne that just highlights a few things. West Valley City is still among the top postal zip codes where the, those who are contracting COVID nineteen at a higher rate. And so, it's a very real issue in ours too. The governor's emergency order is now in place and we'll see if that has an impact over the next few weeks. And I don't know if perhaps some council members, if we might want to lend our support publicly to that through perhaps some sort of a public announcement or video or something. Especially targeted, one of the big concerns is apart from the governor's focus on college age and high school aged people, why we do have some cultural groups, ethnic groups here in West Valley and other places where the high rate of infection, we might want to address or encourage more. Don't know what you think.
So Mayor, you know, now that you bring that up, I saw two news stories today. The two county sheriffs said, that's nice, but we're not going to enforce it. I know that we, as a council, made video months ago. I don't know what the distribution or viewership of that has been. I don't know if that's an effective way to go. Certainly, I don't want any more West Valley residents getting sick and, and perhaps passing away, losing their jobs. The other hardship that that brings into their households. How we address that, how we try to make that better. I would be in support of, but someone's gonna have to come up with a good idea because I don't know what it is.
Well, you're right, and I agree. I'm not wanting to make our police department out there issuing tickets to people for not wearing masks, although that is encouraged by the county. I was thinking more of some targeted items, perhaps one in Spanish. And maybe Don with his Spanish language could do a public service announcement. Maybe we could even have the Spanish radio station play that. Maybe Councilman Phitthi Simanu with his connection with some of the cultural communities out there and his public persona would maybe work well to do that. Those are just thoughts. And I know staff is looking at that to see if they think it would be effective. But if you're called upon, we certainly would appreciate it. Same with Councilman Hyun. Maybe a specific spot, reaching out to the Vietnamese community just because of his relationship with them. It might have more impact, might. Because I'm with you, Councilman Bu, I don't know what else we can do other than encourage. Okay, then with that, council calendar, anything? Hearing none, potential future, oh, yes, wait, is that Councilwoman Lang?
Yeah, so on the calendar, they still have the Veterans Event tomorrow night and the Chat with the Chief at six. I saw that the Veterans Day event got canceled off of our calendar, but not the Chat with the Chief. And I couldn't see anything on Facebook saying it wouldn't be tomorrow night.
We got a notice today that the Veterans Event will be totally virtual.
Yes.
And, and notice on how to get into it. They canceled it off our calendar because it had a location and they wanted to make sure we didn't go to that location.
So are we having the Facebook Live with Chief tomorrow night?
Yeah, I just, I don't, is the chief on by any chance? I'll have to check with her, Councilwoman Lang, and see if that is still gonna go. Looks like Sam is coming to the podium, maybe he has some clarification for us.
Hi, yes, so we did talk to police today and it is going to be canceled. It's an online event. It has been since COVID. So we will be putting out a cancellation notice on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, see, the same thing with my meet the mayor every month is being done electronically. So. Okay, if nothing else, future agenda items? Hearing none, council reports?
Just quickly, Mayor, I want to commend the police and fire departments. There was a, something happened over at one of our elementary schools in my neighborhood. And I kind of followed along with everybody else going over there, but I have no concerns about the children in the elementary schools because the police and fire, when they get a response there, responded en masse. I, you could have done anything else in the city and I don't think it would have been picked up because they were all over there. But I'm proud of them being over there and taking care of those schools.
Yes, Mr. Isaac, be sure and pass that along. Hearing no further reports. The last item on here, eight C, the RDA agenda, we actually already covered that. Because it was the same as our, what was the number up there? Five A. So it's just the RDA's portion of that. So I don't think.
The RDA has to do it also.
Yeah, right, right.
So the information is the same. Of course, they are separate actions, separate groups that have to take care of that, and there's no need for a closed session.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is in order. Then without objection, we will stand adjourned. Hearing no objections, it's unanimous. We'll see you at six thirty.
Thank you all.